This is a regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, January 28th. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor CJ Lutonan, Holy Cross Lutheran Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence following the pledge.
Gracious Heavenly Father, we give you thanks and praise on this beautiful Tuesday morning that you have brought us here and for all of the people of Mobile, Alabama. We offer a special blessing this week upon sons of Mobile and Davidson warriors Jaquaski Tard and Jimmy Ward who are competing in the Super Bowl this Sunday. Heavenly Father, all authority in heaven and on earth is given by you, and we ask a blessing this morning upon the leaders of our nation, state, and local governments, especially here today, Representatives Gregory, Small, Manzi, Davis, Richardson, and Rich, as well as everyone in attendance today, that we might serve for the good and the benefit of those we represent. Heavenly Father, we desire only to serve you, that on the last day you might look upon us and seeing the life, death, and resurrection of your beloved Son, Jesus Christ, you might respond to us as you would to him, "Well done, good and faithful servant." For these and all things, we ask in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we would take our seats, it's been requested that we would observe a moment of silence in memory of the life and legacy of NBA great Kobe Bryant, his daughter, and the other seven individuals who lost their lives on Sunday. Certainly, it was an impactful event, one that we probably all will be able to remember for many, many years to come. He was a champion not only on the court, there in LA, and across the other basketball arenas of this country, but he was a champion in life, a great father, great humanitarian, and that doesn't even start to speak of the other lives and the impact that they had in their communities and with their families. So I'd ask that we would take time to remember NBA great and NBA legend Kobe Bryant, his daughter, and all of the individuals who lost their lives in that tragic accident on Sunday afternoon. If you would, remain standing, Mr. Richardson has an additional name.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would like for us to also have a moment of silent prayer for Mrs. Regina Lane Smith. Couple of weeks ago, Ms. Smith had what was believed to be infection in her lungs. They took her to the hospital and did a biopsy, and to find out that she had cancer in both lungs, and that it had spread to her brains and other parts of her body. And on January 22nd, Mrs. Regina Lane Smith passed away. She was the wife of Gary L. Smith Jr., of SOS Touring. And can we have a moment of silent prayer for the family of Mrs. Regina Lane Smith? Amen.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We first would ask that you would turn off or silence all of your electronic devices upon entering the council meeting. We're glad to see each and every one of you and appreciate your interest in your municipal government. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in first indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must clearly state for the record his or her name and address. Any person designed to speak to the council on an under agenda item must contact City Collects Office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak by 2:00 PM. We ask that all of your commentary be pertinent to City of Mobile business, and the person who hadn't given that proper notice will not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker will be given five minutes to make their presentation. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes; one minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates that all of your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to myself, who serves as chair, and I will subsequently recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Those are the rules of this particular meeting, and again, we are appreciative of your interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of the meetings of January 14th and 21st. Still move.
Second.
Been properly moved in second, any discussion? Great job as always. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Communications from the mayor's office.
Mr. President, the mayor is traveling back from Montgomery and sends his regards. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Monthly finance report.
Good morning.
We are concluding, or have concluded, the first quarter of fiscal 2020. The last month that we have reports for are December, which, as you know, includes revenues received in December from collections made in November. So we do not yet have Christmas in. We always looked at Christmas, or have over the last few years, to see what the jump is in online sales. That's when the largest transition of citizen consumers educating themselves about how to buy online usually takes place. So next month, we'll certainly report on that. Our revenues are above last year and above budget for December. They weren't that much above budget, but we were on the right side of the line, and department expenditures are holding within their budgeted amounts. You know, the legislature convenes next week, and one of the issues that we've talked about between the administration and the council continuously for the last couple of years is about possible changes to the simplified seller's use tax. I wanted to mention two things that kind of bring this home. One, statewide, year-to-date, over last year, online sales taxes are up 62%. That is a huge jump. Some of that is due to changes in SSUT that took effect in the 2018 legislative session but weren't fully phased in until the end of 2019. But certainly, a large amount of that is attributable to the increases in online sales. For Mobile, we are looking at, for just December, disbursements that just took place in early January of a monthly SSUT receipt of 582,000. If you simply annualize that, that would provide 6.9, almost $7 million in SSUT taxes to the city, which, of course, is good. But if you recall, the effective sales tax rate for Mobile under SSUT is 2.8% compared to our 5% ordinance rate for sales taxes. So we lose about 44% as dollars migrate from brick-and-mortar Main Street through SSUT. If online sales in Mobile were taxed at 5%, the receipts would be about 12.5 million dollars. So it looks like, for the current year, we'll lose about 5.5 million dollars. What we hope to do, you may have read that the administrations from around the state are pretty unified on this, is to modify the SSUT sales tax system to more fairly reflect the local collection of sales taxes. It'll be a long haul, but those discussions have begun, and we look forward to advocating for that as the session goes forward. Mr. President, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of our finance director?
I have one question.
Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the moon pie drop, is that considered in December or January? Because I'm very interested to see how those numbers ended this year, as far as the attendance, as far as the amount of attendance that we had this year was large. So I'd like to know what the revenue was, you know, behind that.
That's a very good question. You know, it was really a good year. It's good weather, streets were full. Those lodgings taxes, which is our best indication of how many people were downtown, those are paid over in January. So I will keep that question in mind when we talk about January's numbers next month. We should have that. We can maybe look at Visit Mobile's analysis, too, of occupancy rates that would include that night.
Okay. And not only have Ms. Hunter, I had requested a couple of weeks ago to get some, you know, what was the main reason was, you know, the large crowd this year? Was it because of weather? Was it because the main attraction person that was doing the events? The concert was announced way earlier? That's something that we would like to know as a council also. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Properly moved in second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on March 7th in Mardi Gras Park and May 24th on Bank Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved in second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Public hearings today. It's a public hearing to declare other structures at 5050 Washington Boulevard, 422 Lincoln Boulevard, and 7669 Avenue be public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Is anyone here that would like to speak, offer any commentary during these particular public hearings? Anyone here? If not, public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Toby Roth regarding Amtrak.
I think he passes.
Oh, okay. Stephen McNair regarding Amtrak.
My name is Stephen McNair. I'm here representing the Southern Rail Commission. I reside at 65 South Ann Street, Mobile, Alabama, 36604. The Southern Rail Commission is made up of representatives designated by the governors of the states of Louisiana, Mississippi, and Alabama, and was created by the United States Congress with the intent to restore passenger rail to the Gulf Coast. Now, I'm here today to answer questions, give information about the return of passenger rail to Mobile. So before ye today is a request for the passage of letter of intent essentially asking that a commitment in the future of $3 million be allocated by the City of Mobile to help offset the cost of passenger service for operations. Now, we're here today because we have a deadline of February 5th for a matching grant from the federal government, which if we do not have this letter of intent signed and delivered by February 5th, that $3 million request for operations will become six. So that is why the urgency today. Now, there are still many questions to be answered, that is sure, that is very clear. And I'll begin by saying that I appreciate all of the partners, whether it's CSX, which we've been in conversations with, the Mobile Airport Authority, the Mobile City Council, the Mobile County Commission, the mayor's office, the governor's office. We have diligently been working to find forms of revenue to fund things like infrastructure, the railway station or platform, and to make sure that the return of passenger rail will not have a negative impact on the freight industry or the port of Mobile. We would never want to reintroduce any service that would have a negative economic impact on something so important to the livelihood of Mobile, to the state, and to the region. That's something we take very seriously. So that being said, there's been discussions of a study coming out between CSX, Amtrak, and Norfolk Southern. The agreement to begin that study has been signed and agreed to. That is new information since the last time that we spoke. That study will take about six months. So the question is, why don't we wait for that study to come out before we come back to you for funding? Well, the reason is, like I just said, we're going to run out of time with this federal grant. Now, to be clear, if you approve this letter of intent, you will only be asked to pay the $3 million in the rears over a three-year period if the train runs. Therefore, it is incumbent on the Southern Rail Commission to find other forms of revenue, to find other partners, to fund the necessary infrastructure to make sure this train runs safely and efficiently, and also to make sure that we have a station or platform. Therefore, if you allocate this funding and we don't find that revenue, then the City of Mobile will not be on the hook to pay a dollar. That is absolute fact. And so we're not asking you that you escrow this money upfront. On the other hand, the federal government would have to escrow this money upfront. You would simply be asked that in the future to pay this money should the train run. So to go over the other funding that has been secured, the federal government has allocated $33 million in the form of a Chrissy grant. The state of Mississippi has allocated close to 18 million. The state of Louisiana has allocated close to 10 million. So we need $3 million for operations to cover the first three years, and we need about 2.2 estimated for the infrastructure. An 18-month study undertaken by the Federal Railroad Administration in conjunction with the Gulf Coast Working Group that included CSX came to the conclusion that passenger service can safely be returned to this rail. Now, the question was, what infrastructure improvements are going to be needed? And that's where the 2.2 million came from, was the result of a year and a half of study with the working group, with the freight industry, to identify where new sightings need to be, switch operations need to be updated, and where the sidetrack needs to be should the train terminate in Mobile. So we fully intend to find the revenue for this, to move forward and do this in a safe manner, working with our partners, working with the Federal Railroad Administration, working with this administration, and we certainly appreciate your time and your consideration. Whenever there's public money involved, we appreciate that you're taking that very seriously, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Rich?
We heard from the administration that they wanted more time to give us an understanding of how they'll allot the money, whatever concerns that they have that have not expressed publicly would be answered, but we would get that within the next week. Now, our next meeting is the fourth. If it was to be voted on then, could it be sent electronically? Because that still gets under your deadline for February 5th.
Yes, ma'am. If this body decides to hold this over and have a week and it passes next Tuesday, then legally we can disclose that.
I like hearing that. I wasn't sure you were comfortable with that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just quickly. Mr. McNair, you had mentioned that you are currently speaking with the governor's office and with the county to find some extra funding?
Yes, ma'am. I can confirm that the Southern Rail Commission has had very productive meetings with the members of the Mobile County Commission in discussions of kind of a what-if scenario. What if we do get the funding for operations from this body? Then we'll continue our conversations in terms of infrastructure. I'm not speaking on their behalf today. I'm simply reporting that we have had productive conversations, and I can actively report that we have been in constant contact with the governor's office. We spoke with them just last week. They have not said no to this project. They really have been dutiful in waiting on more information from the local body to see who is interested in funding this at the local level. And so what we intend to do, should the letter of intent pass, is go back to the governor's office and say, now, Mobile is serious. We have skin in the game. Local authority is taking this more seriously. Now it's time maybe for the state to match that money or come up with other funds.
Would it be possible to say Mobile will be interested in having skin in the game if you, Governor Ivey, also put skin in the game? Can you make that a condition?
I cannot make that a condition. No, ma'am. I mean, that's certainly going to be part of the conversation, but I'm not here to speak on it.
That would certainly, I think, relieve a lot of people who are concerned about the funding side.
And to go back to what I started with, if y'all allocate the $3 million and we can't find the rest of the money for the infrastructure, then the deal's off anyway. And so the train, at that point, would probably turn around in Pascagoula, and it just would not come to the state of Alabama, and that would be the end of it. So again, if you allocate the promise of these funds, it's not as if you have to put them on the barrelhead on the first day. It's simply if we can, we being the Southern Rail Commission, can hold up our end of the bargain by finding the remainder.
Any other questions?
No, I sincerely appreciate it. Thank you all. I want to thank the county commission, thank the governor's office, thank the mayor. We look forward to working on this for one more week and hope to find a resolution in favor of passenger rail next Tuesday. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Joaquin Holloway regarding Amtrak.
As Dr. Holloway is coming, I would like to recognize, I believe, the history of Mobile class from Mary T. Blunt High School and their advisors of Ms. Johnson and Mr. Edwards, so we can have them to stand. Let's give them a big round. Appreciate you all coming down to join us this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Joaquin Holloway. I live at 2206 Decroof Court, Mobile, Alabama, 36617-2405. My fraternity colors are royal purple and old gold. However, this morning, I'm wearing these colors in memory of Kobe Bryant, his daughter, and the other seven members who were tragically killed in that helicopter crash. Our fraternity motto is, "Friendship is essential to the soul," and that really is important for all of us to remember. In New Mexico, there's a push-pull commuter train that runs between Albuquerque and Santa Fe named after their state bird. And their state bird is the Road Runner, and the train is called the Rail Runner. Well, let me suggest that a push-pull commuter train running on the CSX tracks between Mobile and New Orleans could be named after another very famous train that ran on these tracks named the Hummingbird, and it would bring back many past memories and allow for many present and future reflections to emerge that will benefit this corridor in many ways. Now is a perfect time for all of us to begin to think outside the box. As I mentioned at a previous meeting, my mantra is, "A train a day helps keep the doctor away," with the exception of those with a PhD degree versus those with an MD. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Appreciate your enthusiasm.
Clifford Melton regarding Amtrak.
Ma'am, I'll pass.
Bill Boswell regarding Amtrak.
Good morning.
My name is Bill Boswell. I live at 1609 Government Street, Mobile, Alabama. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to speak today. I arrived here just momentarily ago on the first train to be arriving into this station with some of my fellow passengers here this morning, who are here as large advocates for the return of passenger train rail to Mobile. We've heard Mr. McNair give a very good explanation of what is being asked of this city. I think it is a no-brainer from my perspective. I understand there are some financial questions that people have, some concerns that there is an imbalance in the amount of money that maybe taxpayers may be paying for a ticket on the train. I've heard comments that the city cannot afford to have this train. My perspective on this is, after being in banking and finance for 35 years, that this is a financial decision that is something that would work in the favor of this city. It's going to bring economic impact, positive economic impact to this city. And one thing to keep in mind is that when you are in city government, as all of you are, and have served this city in the capacities that you have, I think it becomes very apparent that there are many services that are not profit-making. We have parks as part of our city. We have that because there's a quality-of-life perspective. We have police and fire department for safety. I don't remember them making a profit, but I do remember them doing their jobs and making our lives safe. We have schools in our counties that are paid by taxpayers. They are not profit centers, but they provide education for our children. There are things that cities have to have to make quality of life something that will allow people to continue living here and bring people from the outside to live here and raise families and start businesses. And one of those things that we have to have are different modes of transportation. We have an airport that we hope will be improved by the new airport out at Brookley. And other than that, quite frankly, and we also have our cruise ships that have brought a perspective and a new part of a quality of life for this city. We now need the train. We need the train back. I've lived in major cities around the country where trains are and people use them, and it is something that is part of their life. It's part of the urban experience. Mobile is missing out on that, and I would hope that each of you will consider very wisely the idea that trains are necessary, passenger trains are necessary. We know that the port plays an integral part in our lives. It is one of the things in, through the history of this city, that has maintained, made this city a place to be known and realized and a place on the map. But trains, passenger trains were here before, and we can bring them back again without interfering with the port. There are larger ports in the world where trains run successfully along with freight trains, passenger trains with freight trains. So I know there are some questions the mayor seems to still have outstanding. I hope he can get those answers, and I hope that each of you can get your answers. I can tell you, the people in the neighborhoods of our great city would like to see this train. Not everybody's in favor of it, but I can tell you from the people that I've talked to in most parts of this city, they are in favor of it, and I hope you will be as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Herbert Payer regarding Amtrak.
They're passing down. That's different? This is different from what you just gave us? Oh, we're passing it down. Oh, we're passing it down.
First, let me thank you for this fine job you have done for the citizenry of this great city of Mobile. I am usually reserved and publicly divorce in my major concerns or complaints. I usually trust my city council, county officials, to work things out for their constituents, but I cannot be silent anymore when the future of passenger rail service returning to and through Mobile is seemingly in jeopardy. I've always had a love for trains, both passenger and freight, but none more than when I had the unique opportunity back in 2008 and 2010 to take the Amtrak from New Orleans, Louisiana, all the way to Los Angeles, California. But I had to begin this train, this wonderful train ride, on a two-hour bus trip from Mobile to New Orleans. What a shame I couldn't have boarded this train from my hometown as my uncle did just four years prior in 2004. Whatever the reason, we stand here today with a golden opportunity before us which may not come again. We ask to contribute only $3 million over a three-year period. That's just $1 million a year. Surely such a meager amount would not bankrupt this great community of ours. Need I remind you, we have used and gambled far more taxpayer dollars such as ventures as the Maritime Museum. Don't forget, we were sweating bullets when the Colorado Cruise Line left us with a multimillion-dollar parking terminal that we were hard-pressed to find an alternative use for. But this, this is not a gamble, and we are not the only players in this game. This thing is bigger than the city of Mobile. It's bigger than Mobile County. It's even bigger than the state of Alabama. We are talking about restoring passenger rail service, not only from Mobile to New Orleans, but someday linking California to Florida. Other communities along this route, including Atmore, Pensacola, Tallahassee, and even Orlando, are already on board and are counting on us, Mobile, to do what is asked of us to do. And with this great start, we can only get on board, we can also get on board with a north and south route linking our part of the Gulf Coast of Birmingham, Atlanta, and even the Atlantic seaboard, all the way to New York City. And may I add the notion that a brand-new terminal is not necessarily needed. We have three substantial public buildings right on the tracks. Have you ever considered the idea of using a small corner of the convention center parking garage space as a possible Amtrak ticket office? One could park their vehicle in the garage, walk over to the ticket office and board the train, maybe through a new doorway under the building. I mean, the train would be right there. And why not a small ticket office in the Maritime Museum or even the cruise terminal with a covered walkway to the tracks? And this notion about new service being a major disruption to freight traffic is far-fetched at best. We are not talking about New York's Grand Central or Chicago or Los Angeles Union Station traffic. The train would have to sit there and board passengers, maybe a possibility of 30 minutes at the most. So, Mobile, again, this thing is bigger than our fair city. It's more important than our county. It even far exceeds our own state. Florida is ready. Even Mississippi is ready. So let us not be a derailment on this journey to progress. Let us not miss out on such a grand opportunity to finish the final link of passenger rail along our stretch of the Gulf Coast. I leave you with these immortal but paraphrased words. "Mobile, get ready, for there is a train acoming." You don't need no baggage. You just need to get on board, for the train is at the station and the time is getting short, for it's leaving today, leaving for promised lands from coast to coast. Thank you.
All right now.
Carrie Penn regarding Amtrak.
Ladies and gentlemen, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for your audience. For the previous speakers or what have you, they're telling you things that might be or should be.
Could we get your name? Address for record, please.
Yes. My name is Carrie Penn.
Yes, sir.
6501 Moffett Road, Mobile. I spoke into you, Mr. Manzi, and to Ms. Gregory on a previous occasion on a different matter.
Yes, sir.
Okay. On a side note, my heart is engulfed with hope when I see these young people here, that they see this governing process work as it should. Little brothers and little sisters, these are the people that are voted in to represent us. Make sure that you know that the governing process is working as it should, because they've given us an audience to make sure that everything that happens should happen. To the rest of people in the audience, you all don't know me, but I'm a veteran. I raised my right hand, and I gave an oath to protect this country. And I have no qualms, and I will do it again.
Yes, sir.
As far as the Amtrak situation,
All right.
I think that it's a positive thing to the point to where it's a point of connectivity. We're connected. We do that in situations to where people that normally would not have the opportunity to come to and even, you know, just be a part of the situation of us coming together. The gentleman for speaker and everything, when he talked about, you know, the situation as far as the finances are concerned or like that, I would ask the council to just look upon it as something positive, because it's not a situation that somebody is thinking alone. They're thinking they want Mobile to come in and join on board. Plain and simple. So with that, I would say, I would ask you to vote yes, by all means. And with that, like I said, God bless, God speed. And with your decision, keep the Father Creator in your mind when you make your decision, because His is the last hand that will make us move forward. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Reggie Hill regarding Resolution 601147, 31076, 38003, and 60093.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Members of the council, to the administration in absence of our mayor, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. Before I begin, as Mr. Penn, I would also like to send my kudos to these young people. I hope that you will remain engaged in this process. These are where the most decisions are made pertaining to your quality of life. I arrived today to speak to four topics that I feel are very pressing for the citizens of Mobile. I would begin with the Consent Resolution 601147. This is my first time back to the mic in 2020, so this is an early Christmas present for our council. I didn't sign up in any of the Thursdays either, so that might be coming back in February, depending on how it goes. But on this Amtrak issue, let me first say that I am definitely in favor of the improvement of quality of life in the city of Mobile. Any amenities that can come forth and bring about new revenue sources and also bring our people maybe together to explore different areas of the country, I'm all for that. I'm all for trains as well. But to my delightful surprise, after the committee meeting, as well as hearing the preconference this morning, I'm actually in concert with the Finance Committee Chairman and his opinion on the idea of the economic issues that may allude going forth in this process. Not to say that this is not something that can move forward. However, I want us to take into consideration, there was a gentleman from CSX that came in and presented during the committee meeting from Washington, DC. And she offered the idea that if there was support from the state, that the federal government could come in and actually fund this process. Now, in previous times, we've seen where the council has written letters to the state regarding stolen guns, written letters to the federal government regarding tariff protections, all these things of that nature. I would suggest that we actually write a letter so that we would get that state support. So this is something that could be beneficial for all citizens of the city, and so that all areas of both sides of the table, however you want to describe it, could be sufficient. But we're going to have to get that support, I feel, if we're going to move forward, because we're just not sure with the economic opportunities that are before us. And also knowing the economic restraints that are before us as well, we need to ensure that those resources are going towards those things that are actually going to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Mobile. The next issue that I wanted to touch base on was 31076, and I was adopting a community and housing development. I want to commend the efforts of Mr. Jamie Roberts and Ms. Beverly Reed, what they've been doing with the local nonprofits here, the transparency that they've put before. I'm urging that the council will approve this and allow us to go forth, and hopefully we can have additional resources put into projects that will actually help our community move forward. I was excited to see that Ms. Patricia A. Hobbin-Moore, excuse me if I was pronouncing that wrong, was coming along with the recommendations that were provided by our council members and other members of the department. I'm excited to see how all of these initiatives can collaborate together and make this place better, which I believe we all want to see done. Now, the last two issues, which may not be as exciting or many might say as positive. I do want to address the 38-003 ordinance that's being introduced and on the resolutions being introduced, 600-93. I attended all of these committee meetings regarding the municipal court, and many of you know exactly why, because I faced an incident where a court made a ruling based on a law that didn't exist, but yet I still had to suffer and deal with that. And we're taking it into the court, so I'm not going to address much of that here today. But I would like to suggest that as we move forward with anything pertaining to Chapter 38 of the Mobile Municipal Code, we will consider all of those things. We've yet to even see a report of what has happened in the court system. Now, we did see the information that was provided in relations to the other municipalities in the court systems throughout the state. So that information was provided as pertaining to the number of people that were in the court system, the dockets, the amount of money that they received. We've seen all of that. I have all that paperwork. That was actually at the committee meeting. But what we do not have is someone digging into the actual code, which it says that each month, that municipal courting system is supposed to report to this council. And so for a number of years, we have not seen any reporting about what's going on. We're already 30% over capacity in our jail here, and we're not seeming to be doing anything right now to ensure that that decreases. And so we have this 60-093 establishment of other compensation. I know the work is strenuous. I respect the people that do it. I know that it's tough on them, but there are things that we're not doing within the code that has not been met yet, and we're talking about spending more money, taxpayer dollars, in these environments. So I'm hoping that we will have an additional committee meeting dealing with the municipal court, in which we will actually tackle some of those issues and get a better level of transparency between the administration and council and the citizens of Mobile. Thank you, Mr. President, for the time to speak.
Ms. Bush.
Before we go into the other part of our business, I would just like to take a minute or so to talk about Amtrak and make my appeal to the history students of Blunt High School. You are witnessing a historical moment, and I want you to be aware of what is going on. I want you to know why it is historic. Let me say first of all that every industrialized nation in the world funds, they allocate funds to transportation and education, because the well-being of those nations will depend on education and transportation. For every one of you, the state donate thousands of dollars a year to the Mobile County Public Schools System for each one of you to attend school, because if each parent had to educate their own children, it would be far, it would be hardly anybody in school that couldn't afford it. So something that is so valuable for a nation, so important to a nation, that it recognized that if we don't contribute toward that, then it would harm us as a nation. The top nations in the world are the nation who has the highest level, whose citizens have the highest level of education. The poorest nations in the world are the nation whose citizens are not educated. So it's in our best interest to, so the same thing about transportation, with all modes of transportation, except you're talking about your car, it's subsidized. So the question today is whether or not the city of Mobile would subsidize the Amtrak rail train to the tune of a little more than $3 million. And if I ask all of you, all the students in here, if you have actually rode on a train, raise your hand. I doubt if a hand would go up. I see, you see what I'm saying? So this is a whole, you could get to Mobile by car, by ship, by airplane, almost every mode of transportation except train. And this is our opportunity for people all over this nation to come to a destination city by rail, by train. And we're discussing whether or not we want to subsidize the train, what we're debating. If you go and try to get on a city bus out there, we wouldn't have a public transportation in this city if we didn't receive millions of dollars a year from the federal government. It's transportation. It allows our citizens to go to work. It's in our best interest, in my opinion. Amtrak is in our best interest. We don't know of a city who was harmed in any way because they can access the Amtrak train. You see what I'm saying? So we're, if you go to the airport, the federal government, they pay for it. They got their own police force out there. We call them TSA. City of Mobile don't put one dime in there for that. Those officers are paid by the federal government. We have a tower up there. We have people working in that tower who direct the planes to come in and out. All of that is paid by the federal government. The landing field for the trains to come in, federal government. My point is, if you, if everything it took to get the airplane in and out of the airport was paid for by us, we wouldn't be able to get on the plane. Tickets would be too high. It's subsidized. It is subsidized. And we are just talking about $3 million. We have $64 million in surplus. And we have subsidized Airbus, Austin, Tennessee Crump, $64 million. We didn't get nothing out of it. My point to you is, this is a grave issue that could really enrich your own lives if we voted for Amtrak. So I want you all to listen to the debate and see, even after you leave here, you stay tuned to this debate on Amtrak rail. And let it be noted that it was an issue before us for you to observe what we do, how we do it, why we do it. This is a great, this is a great moment for you to learn about this Mobile City Council, the inner workers of the Mobile City Council, why is it important for us to vote for it? I'm a history major. I graduated from University of South Alabama. I majored in history and political science. I'm a historian. I've written seven books. We are glad to have you at our meeting today. We are being enhanced by your presence, and I hope in this debate, you will be enhanced after you hear this great debate on whether or not the city of Mobile would allow Amtrak to come into our city. Thank you. Thank you.
Consent resolutions held over. Sixty eleven forty-seven authorized letter of support to the U.S. Department of Transportation for the grant application of the Southern Railroad Commission to restore passenger rail service.
Move to lay over one week.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? It was indicated to us earlier by Mr. West that there were a couple of items that were lingering that the mayor's office and the administration wanted to find definitive answers for, and after getting those answers, they were disseminated to the council so that hopefully, we would be able to make an even more educated decision as it relates to this very important subject matter. I'm waiting on the information, but that information is not going to jundice my opinion. I support the return of Amtrak. I believe we have the wherewithal, the abilities, both financial and in any other respect, to move this train down the track. The citizens in the community that I represent have wholeheartedly voiced their support. There's a human train that is here. Members of the human train, will you stand? I want them to see the human train.
I see the human train now.
Human train is in the house.
Human train is in the house. Y'all should have had a whistle.
Well, come on, come on, come on back next week with some whistles.
Yeah.
And I ask that you all would be even more vigilant in reaching out to some of my colleagues, principally a gentleman to my left, and stress to him the importance of why we need this transportation amenity in the city of Mobile. There are a lot of concerns, a lot of legitimate concerns, and I understand from the port, from where this would be located, I absolutely get that. But I also believe that there is the abilities for reasonable and rational individuals to sit down and to negotiate those concerns so that it's a win for everybody, and it would be a win for this region, and I'm hopeful that that's what happens. And this contract, this resolution is, if you look at all of the contingencies that are associated with the resolution, if anything that should materialize that would be detrimental either to this city or to this region, there are so many contingencies built into the resolution that would allow us the ability to not move forward. This is a great opportunity, and we often hear about Mobile being the city of perpetual potential. This is an opportunity for us to beat that rap. We don't have to stay in that posture. We don't have to stay in that same condition. And if Gulfport and Pascagoula and Biloxi, if those hamlets compared to the city of Mobile, those hamlets can move forward progressively, then certainly we can. And there's this argument that it'll only bring people from Mobile to New Orleans. I don't buy that at all, because anybody who was subscribed to that argument is saying to me that there's nothing to do here. There's nothing to enjoy here, that there's nothing to avail yourself of. Well, three million people disproved your notion just last year, and we've tasked visit Mobile with doubling that number to six million. So evidently, we believe, we believe so, that we invest millions of dollars in tourism each and every year. We just had the Senior Bowl, one of the most successful ones on the record books. Nearly thirty-six, thirty-seven, almost forty thousand people in the heart of our city. And so I'm hopeful that given these additional days to support needed to move forward will materialize. I'm going to support this resolution. I'm sponsoring it, so I'm certainly going to support it, and I believe that this is a train whose time has come, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to move forward positively.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
Again, for the leopards, a motion has been made for us to lay the whole issue of the Amtrak over for next week. So it looked like we're not going to vote on that today. We're going to lay it over for next week. Keep your eyes open.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? I think we'll just lay it over.
Lay it over.
CIP resolutions held over. Twenty-one zero six-three authorized contract amendment with Mike McDonald for design and surveying services for Florida Street and Dome Street area drainage improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is held over. If there are no objections, I'll take all of these together. Zero-one zero six-four authorized agreement with Patricia Hoben-Moore for comprehensive neighborhood development plan. Zero-eight zero six-five approved purchase order for four police package Chevy Tahoe SUVs. Zero-eight zero six-six approved purchase order for lids and hinges for garbage cans. Zero-eight zero six-seven approved purchase order for forensic software. Zero-eight zero six-eight approved purchase order for purchase of two Pierce pumper fire trucks. Zero-eight zero six-nine approved purchase order for traffic signal and pedestrian poles for Broad Street Tiger Project. Zero-eight zero seven zero approval purchase order to on-target ammunition. Zero-eight zero seven one approved purchase order for annual subscriptions to Drive Cam and Fleet Tracking Services. Zero-eight zero seven two approved purchase order for compact wheeled loader for impound yard. Zero-nine zero seven three reallocate monies from Capitol Project Equipment Human Resources to Capitol Project Government Plaza Lobby Flooring to replace flooring in the Human Resources Department. Twenty-one zero seven four authorized contract with Sheridan Davis for Drug Lab Technician Services for the City Probation Department. Twenty-one zero seven five authorized contract with Premium Parking of Alabama LLC for Cruise Terminal Parking Management Services. Thirty-one zero seven six adopt the Community and Housing Development CDBG Home and ESG twenty-two thousand, twenty-two thousand, one action plan.
So moved.
Checking.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Vice President.
Okay.
And Ms. Richardson.
Yeah. We need to amend zero dash zero six-four. Go ahead and add the language to consultant. The consultant agrees to coordinate with the Council Blue Ribbon Committee on the Affordable Housing.
Second.
Been properly moved in second, and we would make this amendment to this particular item. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Yes, we have, is Patricia Hoben-Moore, which we would look into, vote on this particular resolution, present in our audience today. Mrs. Moore is a former HUD worker, and also she does great works in the city of Birmingham. And we're passing, looking to pass this particular contract for she can help us with the housing development within the city of Mobile to keep more people living in the city of Mobile, and we're to recognize her and looking to pass this resolution today for she can get on board and work with the administration, the council, and our new formally group, which is the Blue Ribbon, the Blue Ribbon Committee that we just formed within the city council. And again, would just like to say welcome aboard, Ms. Moore.
Any further discussion?
This is on...
This is the amendment.
We have, we're at a point where we're determining what we're going to vote on and not vote on. Is this correct?
Well, Councilman Small offered an amendment to this particular...
To this particular...
And it was second, and now we're at discussion. Then we're going to vote on the amendment, then go back to the original.
Okay.
So any further discussion on the amendment? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we're back on the original item.
Announcements. Hi, Dums.
Items, pardon.
She read them off.
It is consent to...
Yes. Any discussion?
My schedule called me out this morning. I just wanted to see if there was a reason why we were going on or taking forward the three hundred thousand dollar contract as consent.
They're not consent.
My accent this morning, my...
What's the number, please? What item are you...
It's all right. We have mine. I'm good.
You good? I'm good.
Okay.
Any further questions or any further comments, discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I think we'll just...
Ordinance is being introduced for the first times eighty-eight zero zero two through thirty-eight zero zero three.
By council rules, these ordinance will be laid over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced. Zero-three zero seven seven through sixty-zero eight seven.
Motion to suspend the rule for immediate consideration for consent resolution zero-three dash zero seven seven through six zero dash zero eight seven.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero-three zero seven seven, zero-seven eight, zero-seven nine, and zero, zero-eight zero, and zero-eight one, and zero-eight two. It's in zero ninety-four. Reappointing Carol Green to the Advisory Commission on the Disabled, appointing Jerry Williams and Leslie Guller to the Citizens Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, reappointing Joe Denton to the City of Mobile Citizens Budget and Finance Advisory Committee, reappointing Richard Meadows to the Electrical Examiners Board, reappointing Charles Jackson to the Public Transit Advisory Committee, appointing Ren Bartlett and Tammy Watley to the Blue Ribbon Affordable Housing and Neighborhood Revitalization Commission of the City of Mobile, and appointing Louise McClellan to the Mobile Tree Commission. Forty-zero eight three, eight-four, eight-five are declaring the structures at fifty-fifty Washington Boulevard, four-twenty-two Lincoln Boulevard, seventy-six sixty-nine Avenue B, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Fifty-eight zero eight six assess cost for removal of weed lien groups sixteen oh one. And sixty-zero eight seven determine donation to the courtyards at Magnolia Grove Homeowners Association serves a public purpose and approved payment.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
CIP resolutions being introduced. Twenty-one zero eight eight through twenty-one zero nine zero.
These CIP resolutions will be laid over for one week by council rules.
Resolutions being introduced. Twenty-three zero nine one through sixty-zero nine three.
These resolution will be laid over for one week by council rules.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one zero nine four call for public hearings to rezone property located on the west side of Range Line Road, half mile south of Hamilton Boulevard, from I-one and I-two to I-two, District Four, scheduled February twenty-sixth.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements.
Mr. Williams?
No, thank you.
Ms. Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of announcements. At our pre-conference meeting, we discussed the ad hoc committee getting back together to discuss some of the issues with our municipal judges. So I will be setting that up in the next couple of weeks. I do have information from the meeting before that I'll make sure to get printed again and redistribute to everybody so that you'll have that. Also, as I had mentioned, this afternoon, beginning at one-thirty, we will begin our interviews for council attorneys starts at one-thirty, so if everybody would please be on time. They are thirty minutes apiece, so we intend to get through the afternoon as expeditiously as possible. Thank you.
No problem. Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last evening, we had an opportunity with Mr. Jamie Roberts and also Ms. Beverly Reed. Had a community meeting in O'Dell, in the O'Dell Community at the First Baptist Church. Great attendance, talking about revitalizing the homes in the nearby neighborhoods, and great attendance. Like to thank all of the residents for coming out on last evening. Also, I talked about in pre-conference this morning that I would like to, this council to have a CIP updated meeting soon, hopefully to announce that on next week, get with the committee, make sure that that particular day would be available, and hopefully make that announcement on next week. Also, I would like to take my hats off to the Senior Bowl Committee and also the city of Mobile for putting on a great Senior Bowl weekend. Friday night was fantastic with the parade and the concert, and also Saturday was great, especially with the attendance. You know, the thoughts that went in my head is that the large crowd that we had on Saturday, how in the world is it going to fit in, you know, USA Stadium? I don't see that how that's going to happen whatsoever. But it was a great day on Saturday, great attendance, great crowd, and the most people, majority of the people that I talked to really did enjoy themselves. And it just emphasized what we're known for, born to celebrate. We celebrated on this past, last week, especially on Friday night with a great parade and ended with a great celebration with the football game on Saturday. Again, thank you, Mr. President, for this opportunity.
No problem. No problem. Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. I'd like to give a background on the towing ordinance that is, it's still in draft form. The committee met and other council members were present. We had a lot of the members of the industry with us, and so we have redlined some of their concerns and brought it to the attention of the Mobile Police Department via their attorney, Wanda Roman, who is now working to see what concessions could come forward. There was one that was rather large, and that was on the appeal process. We're hoping that we can collapse the timeline of when they get notice of an infraction and how quickly they can come to council for an appeal. So that was one of the ones that was important to the industry, and we're working in diligence to try to see whether that could be something that could happen. But until we have these things resolved, I don't look for this to come forward. I was hoping that we would put this ordinance to bed in the next week, but I'm guessing it's going to be another two weeks. But we will send that out again to the industry, and then hopefully, it will be on council's agenda at that point, and we'll be able to vote and finish out having this partnership with the industry in place for removing vehicles, but also that being respectful to the police department that oversee that particular aspect of their jobs as well for public safety. On Monday, February third, there will be a meeting that pertains to the ordinance dealing with the rollback of the PJ. I know there's a lot of people interested in that. Some council people have asked questions of the county and also of this city to give us financial information about this prospect. And again, that will be at two o'clock, Monday the third, on the ninth floor. The committee consists of myself as chair and Richardson and Davis as members, and all council people. I hope that your time permits you to be part of that since it's a big initiative. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also was at the Senior Bowl game, just outstanding game. The official number was thirty-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-two people attended. It was, those were people who was inside the stadium. I would imagine we had another ten more thousand that was tailgating who never even came inside the stadium. So it was well-attended, a great day, great crowd, and to my knowledge, there was not an incident. Everything went off smooth. I would like to address my remarks to our attorney. Let me say first of all that Mars has gone over to Tricentennial Park. They have cut, cut down, I don't know how many of those large oak trees to make way for a trunk line. And it, it has changed the face of the park. No one would hardly knew that an apartment complex was up there in the past, but when you come in there, the first thing you see is that big apartment complex up there, because all of the trees that camouflage the apartment complex are gone. So I... So I checked with the Tree Commission to see what or not. They required Mars to plant, to replant trees based on the trees that they cut down, and I couldn't find out. I saw where they authorized them to go over there. There was nothing in the letters that said that they needed to replant any trees. So I took it upon myself to contact Mars, and I asked them if they would replant a tree for every tree that they took down, and I never got a response. So, this is a challenge. I would like for you to go to our rideaway ordinance and draft an amendment for me to say that if a tree is removed from public property, be it the rideaway or park, as long as it's on public property, if a replacement tree must be planted. And you can get the language. Because it probably took 30 years for those trees to get that large. And even if you planted a tree, it'd be 30 years before it grew. But unless you planted a tree, there would be no tree. So we want to require whoever it is who will take a tree out on public property, they must plant a light tree. Thank you.
Mr. Dave's?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I would just like to correct something that Ms. Rich said, and I know she won't mind me doing this.
No, no, if I did something wrong, I owe me...
She referred to a rollback of the police jurisdiction. And I think it's important, the terminology's important here, because what's before us is rolling back police and fire services in the police jurisdiction.
Oh, yes, public safety.
The other thing you could do is eliminate the police jurisdiction altogether. That's not what's before us. What's before us is to pull back the city of Mobile-provided police and fire services from the police jurisdiction. Thank you.
That's all you...
That's it.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I should have said public safety, I stand corrected, not just police.
I know you wouldn't, I didn't think you would mind me clarifying.
Well, I want to salute these students who've, for the most part, stayed alert and seemed interested, and made it through this meeting. And hope and pray all of you go on to very successful careers, and I hope you stay here in the city of Mobile. That's our desire, in this region, that's our desire. You should not have to leave here in order to have a productive life and have high quality of life. And the train is a part of that. And so I'm hopeful that on next week, my colleagues will join me in supporting this initiative so that all of us can ride on the train of success together. I want to recognize a very important person...
Would you mind if I spoke to the students here also? Let's just make this... Thank you. While we're on the students...
Mr. Dave's?
I just wanted to also extend my welcome to you. I hope that as you grow older, you will consider public service. It's hard when you're moving through the middle part of your life to take the time to do it, because it's very disruptive. But it is really important that at all levels of government, we have people interested in serving the rest of the people. We need smart, capable people in government. And I hope that as you get older and you move into different parts of your life, you'll consider public service at some point. It's vitally important we have good people in public service. Thank you.
Mr. President, I would like, before you close yours out, I would like to address the students too.
Well, wait, wait.
Mr. President, I will listen to Councilman Joe when he gets to be the president. Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Students, I was born in rural Connecticut County in a field. And our daddy died and left eight of us out, eight of us in the house with our unemployed mother. It was 12 of us, and all two died early. After 10, I went up the country. My point, what I'm trying to tell you, don't you let nothing stop you. I could come up here and cite you all kind of instances why I failed. An unemployed mother on a farm up the country? With eight of us in the house to eat? All 10 who lived and got grown, finished high school, seven went to college, my brother under me with Mayor North around the Ohio. Don't you stop till you get to the top of it? Can't nobody fail you but you? Can't no teacher fail you? You fail when you stop. And don't you let them tell you nothing about no failing school. From the first grade, 12th grade, every school I attended was a failing school. That has nothing to do with me. I don't have to fail because they claim no school fail. You fail if you quit. You fail if you stop. You set yourself some goals. And don't you stop, I don't care what they say. They're going to talk about the neighborhood you're in? They're going to talk about you may not have a father now, and I didn't either because he died on us. Don't you let none of that foolishness stop you. But let me tell you, where success is, is at that intersection where preparation meets opportunity. It's at that intersection where preparation meets opportunity. Because I don't care how many opportunities come your way. If you're not prepared, you can't take advantage of it. It's at that intersection where preparation meets opportunity that you're going to be successful. You stay in school. You ain't in school to help your parents, you in school to help yourself. The more you learn, the more you earn. The more you know the further you go, they don't pay for ignorance. As a matter of fact, they haven't found a tool that can even measure ignorance, because there's so much of it. I can tell you how smart you are, but I can't tell you how ignorant you are. But there's no tool that can measure ignorance. You stay in school, and don't you stop till you get to the top.
Hard to follow.
Mr. Small? Well, I just want to...
I think it's time.
That's right. Before we go, I want to recognize a special visitor we have with us along with a traveling companion from the Church of the Living God, Bishop Dr. Martha Edwards, the Pacific Northwest Jurisdictional Bishop of the Church of the Living God. Her and this great denomination have been convening in our city for the last several years. We really have grown close to them, and they've grown close to us in the city. We hope that they will continue to use and utilize downtown Mobile as a meeting place for their faith. And just wanted to recognize the bishop. She recently lost her husband, Elder John White, and I want you to know that you're in our thoughts and in our prayers, and we appreciate all that you and the Church of the Living God do here in the city of Mobile. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Properly moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.